Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 25th, 2016, regular session of the Xenia City Council. We've been in session earlier in a special session and an executive session discussing personnel matters, and we're now ready to begin our regular session. So I will invite Dr. Andy Spencer, Senior Minister, First Church of Christ, to the podium for the invocation, please, and followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Mills. If you would rise with me, please, for the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Father, thank you so much for Xenia and all that it means to me and my family and to everyone here. Thank you so much for the city council, those that meet, and I pray first of all for this meeting. Give clarity to mind, wisdom, a direction. God, I also thank you for those that are on the city council, those that work hard, those that take the praise from people and listen to the complaints, and I pray that you'll give them an extra measure of grace and mercy as they continue to do the best that they can to make this the best place possible. Help us, Father, also not just to rely on those that we've elected. Help us do what we can to do what we can with ourselves, with our family, with our neighborhoods, because that'll make a better city, make a better county, state, country, and a better world. God, I pray that someday we will truly be a one nation under God, and until we become one, help us to do all that we can to make this the best place possible. Guide us now in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Dr. Spencer and Councilwoman Mills. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilwoman Mays.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
Thank you. May I have approval, please, for minutes this evening? First set of minutes is February 9th, 2016, special session, which was a joint session with the Board of Education.
Move the approval.
Moved by Councilman Wallace, seconded by Councilman Lauterback. Discussion or question on this set of minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Abstain.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now a motion, please, for the February 11th, 2016, regular session.
So move, Mr. President.
Moved by the Vice President, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on this set of minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Abstain.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Maybe I should explain that I abstained on all three of those since I was absent from the meeting celebrating my 50th wedding anniversary.
I think I recall, and I think recalling a valid excuse being delivered for why you were not present.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for clarifying again. And now finally, please, a motion for the February 16th, 2016, special session.
So move.
By Councilman Wallace, second, please. Second by the Vice President. Discussion or question on this final set of minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please feel free to do so. Step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments to four to five minutes, please.
Ralph Southsir, 1636 West Second Street. I've got three items for you, gentlemen and ladies. How much has Simon Katton School cost the city of Xenia since it was more or less given to you? And what are you supposed to do with it? Give it away? And then you say you ain't got money for the fire department and the police department. I'd like to have a count of the money that's been spent on Simon Katton School, which that is, I've seen on TV where that request is a legal request. And then another thing, I heard that through the TV that the city council was talking about buying the old Kmart building and lots. What's the, what are you doing, going into real estate? That ain't right. You ain't got money for the police and fire department, and then you're gonna spend money on a building that's just sitting there. Well, the third one is the police and fire department, so I think I've covered that. Has anybody got an answer for me on any of it?
Sir, as part of our general rules of council, this is an opportunity for you to address us. We certainly have heard your questions. The Assistant City Manager has probably noted them down. We can certainly, that's public information, we can seek to answer those. If you would direct a question to our Clerk of Council as a public information request, we can certainly validate that and deliver the answers. But at this time during the meeting, we don't interact and debate with the speakers. It's simply your time to come and address us.
Well, I've got, took my piece.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening?
Hello, my name is Jen Taggart. I am covering this meeting for a college journalism project, and President Engel emailed me and requested that I introduce myself. I'm from the Cleveland area, and yeah, I'd like to be a reporter someday, so.
We have one right here for you to meet, actually.
Don't do it, get out now.
He really likes this a lot. He really, really does. Thank you very much for coming, and are you a freshman, sophomore, junior?
I'm a junior.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Do we have a young Boy Scout that would like to come up and give his name? Two Boy Scouts that would like to come up? Give us your name, what troop you're with, and what you're working on.
Oh, my name is Nathan Miller, and I'm from Troop 165, and I'm here on a merit badge.
Which one?
Which one?
Citizenship in the community. Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
For coming.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kayden Westland, and I'm from Troop, Troop 165, and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing none, we will move to reports of committees. Mayor Bayless, mayors and managers, please.
Thank you. The mayors and managers met on the, we meet on the second Wednesdays at different locations in the region. I serve as immediate past president to that organization, and of course, the hot topic is still the concern with the local funds, the cuts in local funds from the state. All the communities are suffering, so when you hear us talk about cuts, we were doing well, we were on target, but because of the state cuts, we're now suffering, and that's the loss that we're, that we talk about. And the Rainy Day Fund for the state is now up to $2.3 billion, so they have quite a good reserve while the local municipalities are suffering because they've cut our funds. So it's nothing that's unique to Xenia, as we've said, but every community is feeling the hit. So that's going to be the topic for quite a while, I believe.
Thank you very much. Anything for the mayor and mayors and managers, please. Councilman.
I would like just to piggyback on the mayor. Regardless of your politics, the governor of Ohio has balanced his budget on the backs of cities all over the state, including Xenia. Local government funds, the House Bill 5, the estate tax. He goes around bragging about how he's balanced the budget, but cities like this are struggling all over the state. So again, this is not a political speech, but I just want everybody to know how the state can balance their budget, and they put it on the backs of cities. Thank you.
And to put a finer point on that, and I'm sure that the Finance Director could help me with this if I go astray, that amount to us is on the order of half a million dollars or so per year.
Well, actually, when you look, when you add the estate tax to the reimbursement for the elimination of the personal property tax, when you look at House Bill 5, when you look at the local government fund, you're looking at a million dollars.
Million.
Roughly accounts for a deficit magically that we have in 2016 of, guess what, a million dollars.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank my colleagues on council for passing the resolution that we asked for, and you passed it in my absence, but I had certainly urged you to put that resolution together, because I think you've heard me say more than once that I felt like Governor Kasich is a hypocrite running all over the country, talking about how he's got a $2.6 billion surplus, or he's calling it a $3 billion surplus in Ohio, but he hasn't mentioned the fact that he's done it by bankrupting 99 counties and every city in the state of Ohio. And that, no, I'm not being political either, but it's a fact that he's done that at the expense of the local governments, and of course, that's why all the local governments are having to have levies for school boards, levies for police and fire levies, for all kinds of things at the local level, and school boards and libraries and everything else, because the state is getting fat off of the local governments. But I do thank you for passing that resolution, and I hope that other municipalities will do the same around the state, even though it may or may not do any good.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I just add one thing? Talking about the resolution, we did meet with the representative from the governor's office, the Finance Director, Assistant, were you there?
Not with the governor.
And our city manager, yeah, the four of us, and Sandra Brazington, and we did meet and gave her a copy of the resolution and expressed to her our concern over this loss of funds for the city of Xenia. So we did our due diligence in delivering that message.
I would, I would just add to that, that Mr. Mayor and I also met with then Representative Hackett, now Senator Hackett, and presented him with the resolution as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for the mayor and mayors and managers, please? If not, let's move. Councilman Lauterback, please, MVRPC.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a handout for everybody, and I have some there. It's the Executive Director's Report. The hot button issue right now is the super street design proposed for Route 35. It's getting very complicated, very political, and so I asked the President if Brian, if he could approve Brian Martin, the Executive Director of MVRPC, to come to our March 24th meeting to give you some insight at what's going on. There's been a lot of articles in the newspaper, television, and I know it gets kind of complicated, and it doesn't have to be complicated. All they have to do is take out three traffic lights on Route 35 to save the taxpayers millions of dollars, but because of a few car dealers, they are protesting, and they're coming up with all these different designs. So anyway, Brian Martin, the Executive Director, will be here March 24th, hopefully to explain it better than I can. Thank you.
And I did approve that request, I think, could come with you.
Thank you.
Anything for Councilman Lauterback and MVRPC, please? Seeing none, moving to items from city council and mayor. We have one scheduled appointment, scheduled item, an appointment to the Traffic Commission. Vice President? Or no?
No.
Sorry.
Old habits.
Old habits die hard.
It's all right.
Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you.
My apologies.
She's as fair as her speech for about half.
It's been a long day.
Settle in, I like that. I will read part of this. As many of you know, I was, I served on the Traffic Commission for several years, and when I was elected to city council, I then stepped down from the Traffic Commission, which left a vacancy. It's been vacant for several months. In late January, early February, Mr. James Lee Preston approached me and expressed an interest in serving on the Traffic Commission. Mr. Preston is an ideal candidate for several reasons. Mr. Preston spent six years in the trucking industry. He's spent eight years as an Ohio State Patrol Officer, and for the last 20 years, he has had a local business here in Xenia. He's owned and operated Hillside Assisted Living. He's also been a coach at Xenia Christian for 24 years, and in 2011, he received the Xenia Chambers Stefan Award, which is an award presented to persons who work unselfishly through voluntary services to promote the Xenia Area Chamber of Commerce and the Xenia Community. Mr. Preston is a respected member of the city of Xenia, and I am very honored to call him a friend. Today, I'm recommending that Mr. Preston be appointed to fill the vacancy on the Xenia Traffic Commission, with the term expiring October 12th, 2018. And since this report was written, Mr. Preston's background check did come back satisfactory. So tonight, I'd like to move to appoint him.
Thank you. Have a motion to appoint. May I have a second, please? Second by Councilman Lauterback. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any other business from my colleagues under items?
Yes.
From city council and mayor?
I have an appointment that I would also like to ask, please.
Thank you.
We at BRACA, the Board for Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities, have a appointed ex officio, nonvoting member, and that is a student representative from the Xenia, Xenia High School. And so at this time, I was able to meet with Mr. Michael Graham. He is a junior at Xenia High School, and he is a member of the National Honor Society, the Chemistry Club, the Yellow Ribbon Committee. He is an athlete and participates in cross-country in tennis. In his spare time, he works at Bob Evans. But he was so excited, and he was very interested, and we spoke, and I told him, you know, when the meetings were, and he's like, no problems, that would be wonderful, and he would also like to help, and these are his words, "bridge the gap between city government and the youth of our community." Our principal, Ted Hollup, has endorsed this appointment, so at this time, I'd like to move to appoint Mr. Michael Graham to a one-year term as ex officio member of the Board for Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities, with the term expiring February 25th, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on this appointment, please?
I appreciate people volunteering. Our positions, our commissioner positions, they're unpaid volunteer positions. These people are giving up sometimes 12 meetings a year, and beyond that, a lot of times, they volunteer in other capacities.
With BRACA.
Especially BRACA. So I really appreciate all our citizens for stepping up and just helping our community be better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation, discussion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I thought we had a report from ADAB on for tonight's agenda. It's not going to be on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other motions this evening, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion this, tonight, actually, a few motions. First motion I would like is a motion to waive the requirement for additional quotes and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Pickrell Schaefer in Ebeling to provide legal services as interim law director, starting March 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Have a motion for this contract action, please? Second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I also like to entertain a motion tonight to direct city manager and the Finance Director to begin the process for considering candidates for the position of law director.
Thank you. Have a motion to direct the other appointed officials. Have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to entertain a motion to direct the city manager and/or the Finance Director to contact Greene County and City of Belbrook and to enter into discussions to provide prosecutorial services.
Thank you. Have a motion to direct the city manager or Finance Director? Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to direct the city manager and Finance Director to enter into discussions with Ron Lewis to provide prosecutorial services.
Thank you. Have a third motion to direct the city manager and Finance Director. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything else from my colleagues under items from city council and mayor, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager, or Mr. Acting City Manager, sorry.
Thank you, President Engel. The first item we have tonight is to provide information to council, actually originally slated for the special session earlier tonight. It's in relation to redevelopment of the town square, specifically the former Kmart property. As most of you are aware, the city has been actively working to facilitate redevelopment of that, of that area, that property. We've issued an RFP. There were two different developers who responded to that RFP, and we are here tonight to make a recommendation that council enter into an agreement with Brandy Corp., one of those two developers, for redevelopment of the former property. Mr. Fortchner, Brian Fortchner, our city planner is here. He was the one who facilitated the RFP process, and he and I will gladly answer any questions you have. I'd like to, for him to go through in a little more detail what the process was and what the proposals were, and then ultimately, we will request that council entertain a motion to authorize the city manager, city manager to enter into negotiations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, we began the RFP process right after council authorized the termination of the lease on the property and thus gaining full control of the property. We're in the process of finalizing that. We've closed, and it's just a matter of working out a couple of title-related issues. And while doing that, we developed an RFP based on a review of best practices in other communities and sent it out to 13 developers who specialize in urban redevelopment. We heard back from two, the Schuler Group and Brandy Corp. In reviewing those, we established a series of objective criteria that were in the RFP. We met as a staff committee, it was myself, as well as Development Director, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, and City Engineer, Public Service Director. We looked at things such as completeness of the proposal, consistency of the plan in the proposal with the city's vision, the community's vision for that property, qualifications of their team, the feasibility of the project, and fiscal impact. Both firms are highly qualified developers and well-capitalized. They both do a lot of work in the southwestern Ohio area. They both submitted a concept plan that was, that called for the same general things we've been talking about, the extension of the street grid through the site, a mix of retail and restaurant development. However, there was a, there were some notable differences between the two. The Schuler Group, we noticed essentially recycled the original plan that was developed by Genesis, and actually with assistance from the city, called for the theater at the back, as well as a line of restaurants and retail out front. However, they did not provide a pro forma, which indicates the level of feasibility of the project. They also developed, they provided several phases, with the theater component being in the fourth phase occurring much later, like in the 2019 timeframe. That kind of led us to believe, or led us to kind of suspect whether that team really thought that that was a feasible element, if they're putting at the end, is it really going to happen? There was no pro forma provided. Brandy Corp. developed an original plan, more unique, there was some original thought involved with it. They provided a pro forma with it that showed level of feasibility. It showed a mix of restaurants and retail. It wasn't quite as specific, it didn't specifically identify theater, but it did more generally state retail with the option of possible office development, depending on the marketing process. It doesn't, doesn't really rule out a theater, but it just was more general in the land use descriptions. But in general, same general mix of uses that we're talking about, same idea of extending the streets, creating a pedestrian-friendly type of environment. The, looking at the list of qualifications and projects they have experience on, we felt that Brandy Corp.'s past experience was more comparable to what we're looking at. Both firms had experience in retail. Brandy Corp. had a little more experience in mixed-use urban lifestyle center types of projects that we felt was, was a little more applicable to this site. And overall, we felt, I think, just the overall assessments, we felt that they, they put more original thought and detailed thought into their pro forma, and it was more evidence that it would be a feasible plan. And that's, and a combination of those factors, I think, led us to clearly pick them as the preferred developer. Tonight, we'd like to request that you, by motion, select the developer to move forward with. We recommend Brandy Corp. to you. The next step will be to enter into negotiations on a development agreement and purchase agreement, which ultimately result in them purchasing the property from the city and developing it per the terms that we agree on. And those agreements will obviously come back to you for your final approval. So we're just asking for permission to move forward with them in those negotiations.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into the negotiation with Brandy Corp. for redevelopment of the former Kmart? Moved by Councilman Wallace. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman.
There was 15 RFPs sent out, is that correct?
Thirteen.
Why did we only get two responses?
I would have to ask the other firms. I don't know for sure.
I mean, to me, that's kind of embarrassing. And the RFPs, were they all consistent? Was it every, could I see the RFP sent to Brandy Corp. and the Schuler Group?
Yeah, the same RFP was advertised to all firms.
Okay.
So, and certainly we can make a copy of that available. It was on the city website as well. It's not on there anymore, but we could certainly make a copy available to you.
And we have or have not closed on the...
We have closed in escrow, and we're waiting on title insurance at this point.
And how long will that take?
It really should be any day. We are waiting on a evidence of a retired former industrial revenue bond that was issued back in 1979 that was actually between the county and, at the time, Pittsburgh National Bank. This bond was used, I think, to originally build the original Kmart. And most likely, it's been retired, but it's just a matter of finding evidence it's been retired. But we are getting very close to uncovering that. Once we do, we'll proceed.
Will the Kmart be demolished?
Yes, that is the plan.
And how much, how big a project is this?
How big in terms of...
Money.
For the demolition or...
For the demolition.
The total project.
Well, Brandy Corp. indicated in their proposal that the construction, their construction estimate, and granted this is preliminary, is $5 million.
The reason I ask, I got something from the Daily News.
Yes.
Me, as a councilman, I'm getting tired, sick and tired of reading these things in the newspaper. These things should be passed along to this council before you ever go to press.
It did get passed along to you last week.
The $5 million project?
All the information except that price tag, which is really irrelevant because that's just an estimate at this point, and it really is, I'm not sure what you're getting at.
What I'm getting at, I'm getting tired of reading what's going on in the city in the newspaper instead of having knowledge ahead of time.
Well, you received the staff report that was sent out last Friday, which included more information than what was in that article.
And I would say, you know, everything you read in the paper isn't necessarily accurate. These are very preliminary. We could give you a number. No, no, to present media. But at this point, there's a negotiation process where the actual investment number would be determined, and that's just something that was in the pro forma. It's really not anything that's been settled at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're focusing on the one thing in there that was not in the staff report that went to council. That article did not go into detail on the more relevant issues of why we picked one developer over another, which is really the focus of your decision tonight. And it just so happened that the reporter asked for that number, and, you know, we gave it to them. It's in a public record. But the amount of investment is really, you know, it's not really part of the decision-making factor in selecting one developer over another. The amount of the construction cost estimate, that just happens to be their estimate of how much they're going to pay to build the buildings.
It is a factor. I would say the estimate of investment between the two developers was very similar. Brandy Corp.'s was a little more specific, whereas the other developer gave us a broader range. But in the end, all of that will be, it'll be a little more concrete as we get into negotiations with the developer.
That's why I was wondering about the RFP. I'm familiar with both companies. Brandy Corp. does all their work on the other side of the river.
That's not true.
Henley Schuler, yes, it is. Henley Schuler.
No, it's not true, sir.
Yes, it is true.
They developed Stone Creek Town Center, which is in Colruan Township. That's on this side of the river. They also are doing work in the city of Montgomery. That's on this side of the river. They also did work in Liberty Township, and that's on this side of the river. Yes, their office happens to be on the other side of the river.
And the majority of their work has been done on the other side of the river.
I don't know that that's true.
Well, I'm telling you it's true.
Oh, I didn't see that in their proposal. Every project they provide was on this side of the river, so I don't know where you're getting that from.
Well, trust me. I know a little bit about this. And Henley Schuler is a local company. They can be here.
They're in Lebanon.
Is Lebanon closer than across the river?
Yeah, but...
Is it, isn't it?
Thank you. Other questions, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
No.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda tonight is the purchase of water meters. As with any piece of equipment, there's a useful life and a point at which equipment must be replaced to ensure proper operation. Water meters are no different, and the city must occasionally replace meters to ensure the proper reading of usage. Public services identified the meters referenced in the agenda item as in need of replacement. These are all larger meters. They're either four-inch meters or six-inch meters, and therefore, the users are typically large consumers of the water service. Staffs requesting the award be passed as an emergency so as to avoid any potential loss of revenue due to faulty meters. I would also just add that the average life of these larger meters is approximately five years, and at a minimum, should probably be replaced about every 10, and some of these are approaching 15 years.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency?
So moved as an emergency.
Councilwoman Mills made the motion. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
The next item would be related to our CHIP program. In 2014, the city of Xenia, in partnership with Greene County, made application for a CHIP grant. The grant was awarded in the amount of $625,000 and has been administered by the Greene County Community Development Department. The city's portion or share of expense for the grant is $60,000 of program income, which was appropriated in 2015. The dollars weren't spent in 2015. The staff is requesting that the appropriation be made in 2016 to cover the city's share.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction of the ordinance to reappropriate $60,000?
So introduced.
Introduced by the mayor. Thank you very much.
Second.
No need for anything else. No need for a second.
The last item that I have for you tonight is the reappointment of Elaine Hughes to the Greene County Board of Health. She's been serving since she was appointed on December 11, 2014. Her term is set to expire at the end of February, and it is the city manager's recommendation that Ms. Hughes be reappointed with the term expiration date of February 28, 2020.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to reappoint?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? I know the lady. She is a fine person in the community. I know she's done a great job. I'm sure it will continue on to 2020. Roll call, please.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Anything for the acting city manager this evening? You keep getting promoted here. Councilman.
Just one item, for lack of a better term. Was there an event at Simon Kenton School last Friday?
I am not aware of an event. I can certainly check and see. Is there something specific, some specific information that you'd like related to?
Yes. I had two citizens call me and said there was fire trucks, ambulances, police at Simon Kenton School last Friday evening.
Okay. I can certainly check. There may have been a training of some sort that I'm not aware of, but we'll check and see what may have occurred.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the acting city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items this evening. The first of which, I'm asking for introduction of various ordinances and resolutions dealing with putting financing in place to cover park improvements and also a medic unit. Also requesting one motion to transfer appropriations. The first item, the medic unit, I believe the council awarded the purchase back in June of last year. The expected delivery is April of this year, and we'd like to put the financing in place. We are asking for approval or an introduction of the legislation, the resolution to work with U.S. Bank at a rate of 1.75% over a five-year period to finance the medic unit. The second pieces of legislation deal with putting into place $1 million in financing for various park improvements at various parks within the city. I think council has had a work session where there have been discussions on the splash pad at Xenia Station, various improvements at Sterling Green Park, potential improvements at the East End Park, and also at Solarnovitz. We are asking that the legislation be introduced with Huntington Bank at a rate of 2.49% over a 10-year period for the million-dollar financing. And I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have some legislation in there to appropriate dollars for bond council fees because in terms of the financing for the park improvements, Huntington Bank determined they would do a bank bond instead of a capital lease, requiring an ordinance. So therefore, there's a little bit of a supplemental appropriation ordinance required. Also, there's a transfer of appropriations, and the reason for the motion to transfer appropriations is we want to capture all those costs in one area. We're setting up a specific cost center so that we can show the auditors that when we get the $1 million in, that we spend it for that particular purpose. So there are various pieces of legislations to be introduced and then the one motion, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. May I first have an introduction of the ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Huntington Bank for $1 million to finance improvements at various city parks at a rate of 2.49% over a 10-year period?
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilwoman Mills. Thank you. Now, please, an introduction of an appropriation ordinance appropriating $20,000 into 361-6410-5310101 account, $27,021 into 361-6225-53607 account, and $714 into 615-1223-53607 account.
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilwoman Mays. Now, a motion, please, to transfer appropriations from several of those named accounts for the purposes that the finance director described.
So moved.
So I don't want you to read all that again. Moved by Councilman Wallace. Second, please. Seconded by the mayor. Discussion on the motion, please? Councilman.
Mark, if you could, point out to the public...
Yes. I was going to, but please ask the question.
We have a million-dollar deficit. And as a matter of fact, we're going to have to make some decisions to come to you, the taxpayers, for a levy. The million dollars that goes to the parks, correct me if I'm wrong, has nothing to do with our negative cash.
That's correct. This funding will come from our General Capital Improvement Fund, and as we've talked with the facility project, and we're talking here with the park improvements, that is out of our General Capital Fund. And the General Capital Funds are different than our operating funds, and the funding is coming from the quarter of percent. The citizens may recall that we passed a quarter of percent that went to general capital and then the quarter of percent that went toward the police and fire and our general operating needs. And so this quarter of percent is available to fund these park improvements. So that's, we're not really talking about adding to the deficit with this particular, with these park improvements, you know, given minimal operational costs that would come about from these improvements. So the medic unit, different issue, obviously much needed in the fire department to obviously continue operations and to continue on in the plan and replacement of that capital need. That does, you know, come from funding from our general fund. However, the park improvements and the million dollars here, we're talking about also financing it, so we're talking about, on average, of about $120,000 a year. And over in a few years, the park improvements that the council awarded and we did finance for the Shawnee Park improvements will start to drop off, and it is about the same amount, same level of dollars that we would be talking here with these park improvements.
Thank you very much.
I know I voted for the medic unit in June, but if it was today, I would have some questions because of our million-dollar deficit. This is $192,000. We, last couple of meetings ago, we tabled $126,000 worth of vehicle, which was a good move. But, you know, in 2010, we, and I supported it, we passed a levy, and we promised the citizens that we'd bring back six police, six fire. We promised the citizens we would raise our budget from $150,000 to $500,000 on the street. We promised the citizens of the park improvements, Shawnee Park, and now we're doing this with the other parks. But in good conscience, I can't support a tax levy. Our citizens are up to their eyeballs in taxes, and I've made my decision early. We just, we're going to have to find a better way. And we've got 220 employees, and I don't know why we pick on the police and fire. The proposal given to us is we're going to have to, if the levy doesn't pass, we're going to have to lay off six police and six fire. I don't understand that. Because we've got 70 police and fire, we've got 220 employees. That's only one-third of our employees. So shouldn't we be looking in other areas than our safety services? I'm sure, I'm not for laying off anybody, but again, I'm not going to put it on the taxpayers' back. It's just, I made promises in 2010, and I won't go back, I won't go back on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Please. Thank you. As we are looking at our parks and using the money that the taxpayers approve for our parks, I would like to add that I would like our Parks Department, whoever that is, to look at, not Braca, whoever that is, to look at a piece of equipment, something that would be handicapped, accessible for a wheelchair. I know that, and I've seen them in video, a type of a swing where the wheelchair rolls up on top of it and can swing, but when we look at our children's with disabilities, we have nothing of that, and I know it is costly, and so I know that it would need to be in a chosen park and very much monitored. But I think that is something that we have, unfortunately, have oversighted, and it's something that I would like to bring up and address and to be able to maybe achieve that sometime in the future.
We'll certainly evaluate what options there may be.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or question on this point, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, please, an introduction of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with U.S. Bank for an amount not to exceed $194,443.40 to finance the purchase of a medic unit at a rate of 1.75% over a five-year period. Thank you. Introduced by the Vice President.
The second item I have is the scheduled bills in the amount of $340,411.76.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, this evening, to pay our bills?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterbeck, seconded by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So I have this evening, Mr. President. Thank you very much. May I have anything for the Finance Director's office, please? Seeing none, our law director is not with us this evening, and he has no items on his schedule, so we will bypass that section of the agenda and move to the summary of action items. Anything to update, Mr. Acting City Manager?
I think the review of the merchant banking services can come off. I think the council city managers worked with a vendor to help lower the cost for that service.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything that my colleagues would like to modify or add or subtract from it, please? Thank you, Councilman.
I brought up last meeting for the city to look into natural gas aggregation. I would like to have that added to the summary of action items.
Sure, and I can speak to that, that I did contact our consultant who had facilitated the electric aggregation. She's going to give back to me her opinion on what timing, the best timing of that would be, and if in fact it would be beneficial with where rates are, and I'm sure that she is going to see it as beneficial in some way or capacity, but waiting to hear back from her on her recommendations on how we proceed.
Thank you. We'll add that to the list and receive an update when you hear back. Anything else, please?
On that very first item there.
Yes.
With the Xenia Community Schools, it just reminded me that while we met with the Xenia Community Schools Monday two weeks ago, we mentioned the possibility of having school board representation as well as staff representation at the E-DAB. And at the E-DAB meeting on Tuesday, President Spar and Assistant Superintendent Christie Fielding were both present at the meeting and were participatory in the process, and they had contributed to the discussion. Each of the members of the E-DAB, Dick Montgomery was not present, but everybody else was there, and they all agreed that we should meet quarterly, and we went through the schedule. So just, and President Spar said that they would be present even if they were not added, and we didn't amend the charter to provide for their inclusion, that they would still be there to participate and to allow their. In fact, when we went into executive session, we allowed their participation even in the executive session.
Thank you very much. An excellent example of what I see is growing collaboration, not just cooperation, but collaboration between the city and our very valuable school corporation. Thank you. Anything else for the summary of action items, please? Seeing none, moving to reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Wallace, please.
I just did.
You just did. Anything else, sir?
I think, no, I've already thanked you for the resolution on the issue of the state's painful treatment of local governments, and I thank you again for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
Oh, thank you. I said "oh" because I was.
Surprised you.
Yes, I was pulling up on Facebook that there is opportunity to support our community Easter egg hunt. Sarah is, works with the Association of Area Churches and Ministries, and they are in partnership with the city through BRACCA, so Sarah and I work together hand in hand with the Easter egg hunt. We have 2,000 children, and I've had 2,000, well, not just children, but people in blizzards where you couldn't hardly even see the eggs, and they still came out, they were still participating. So I would just like, if you would like to contribute to your community and make a difference, that you can drop off baskets here at City Hall. We encourage you to leave your name, your business card, we announce it, we want to, you know, say thank you to those who help out. And we also, you can leave them at Emmanuel Baptist, the church office, that is where the offices for the churches, area churches and ministries. And so I just want to encourage everyone, Easter comes early this year, March the 27th.
27.
Yep, so the Easter egg hunt is the 26th. So please think about our community. We have so many great opportunities with BRACCA. We laugh about, you know, participating. I cannot say enough about the members of BRACCA with 17 events that we do seasonally. We're a very busy group of people, and I can't say enough than thank you for everyone that joins us, the National Honor Society, different groups of people that come out and support us at different various times. So thank you again, but if you have any questions, please ask Sarah about the baskets. Did you like that?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lauterbach.
Thank you. Just two things, speaking of Christie Fielding, she was named a top administrator in the southwest, I'm sorry, yeah, the Ohio School Boards Association Southwest region, so hats off to her. And also, congratulations to the Xenia Bucks. They lost their tournament game Tuesday night to Sydney, 56 to 50, but they had a great season, and I was really proud of their, I went to the tournament games, I was really proud of their sportsmanship. I mean, that, you have to learn how to win, you have to learn how to lose. So again, hats off to them, they had a great season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Mays.
Councilwoman Mills took my, took my, took my fire. Ditto to everything she said. Please support the Easter egg hunt, please consider donating a basket from your church, from your ministry, from your business. We want to help make this a great community event, so come on out.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did attend a special luncheon that was sponsored by Wilberforce University in my honor for Black History Month, and thank you, thank you. And I certainly thank all council members who, and city officials, administration who could come out and support. I realize it was during the day, and people had to work, and so, but those who were able...
Is that a lie, by the way?
He had a very busy day that day, or he would have been there, I know he would have, so, but I do thank you. The very special guest that day, I thought, I didn't think it was me, I thought it was Jonathan Jarvis, who's Director of the National Park Service, and out of 410 parks, national parks in the country, he picked three parks to visit, and ours was one, and reclaimed the Colonel Young Buffalo Soldier's home right there on 42. You know, a few years ago, I was able to represent the Colonel Young home in Washington, D.C., when the president signed his approval to make that a national monument. And so we're extremely fortunate, and some things are moving ahead, and some renovations are taking place and will take place, and that will be open for tourism very soon. Along with that, Mr. Jarvis did visit Cox Elementary School and talked to the students there, and they had some workshops. And one of the initiatives of President Obama is to give every fourth-grade student in the country a pass to any national park, and what a great honor that is. So all of our students in fourth grade received a pass to the, any national park.
For their entire family.
Yeah, for their entire family. So that, yeah, it's a very good deal. And then he traveled on to Central State that evening as well. And then, if you're my age, you might remember Sonia Sanchez, who's a very well-known poet, and she is an activist, and she also visited that weekend as well and spoke for Founder's Day at Wilberforce University on that Friday, where she delivered a speech, and it was just very eloquent. She's a, I got to sit and talk with her, I'd heard her probably 40 years ago, and just to be in her presence and to meet her, what a wonderful person, and just so warm, and it was just a really great time. And then that evening, I was honored again. You guys had to hang with me a little more, huh? But Wilberforce was honoring people who they felt were responsible, might be too strong, but I'll use that word, but were helpful in them gaining their accreditation to stay open as a university, you know? Just a couple of years ago, it was very iffy if Wilberforce would exist, and now to think that today they're celebrating 160 years of existence. And one thing that I was able to tell them was that both my paternal and maternal grandparents, both sets, actually met when one was coming to go to school at Wilberforce University and met the other in Xenia, so. And then my mother was a 1941 graduate of Wilberforce. So anyway, they gave a beautiful sculptured plaque to those individuals they felt worthy of helping, so. And on this week, I attended the Issues Committee for the regional mayors and managers, and again, as I stated earlier, the main topic of discussion is always the cuts from the state, and so that's a hot topic. There is a college called Glenn College near Columbus who's doing an in-depth study, and will have some figures and some, just gathering a lot of information to talk about the impact and the different things related to those cuts. Today, I entertained some, three other mayors just around this area at One Bistro. Some are interested in setting up a program like that, and they just thoroughly enjoyed it, and I want to thank our own Mary Crockett for allowing, can I tell them we've got to peek in? I'll tell you, but don't tell anybody that we were able, we were able to peek in. And along with that, one of the things that they're having, they're having an Easter brunch on Sunday, March the 27th, from 11:00 to 3:00. It's a Xenia fundraiser to help provide weekly community meals and expand the One Bistro ministry, and they're having great food. I've given all the council a copy of this, I mean, prime rib and the whole bit, the cost.
So are you taking the rest of council there?
Right. Yeah, meet me there.
Meet you there, guys.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll hang with you.
Yeah, with your pocket, with your purses. So anyway, that's, that's that. But it's $24.95 per person, per adult, and $7.95 per child 12 and under. And again, they have a number, and it's online, and make your reservations early, because they are filling up, they're expecting probably 200 people. And if the new part is open by then, and we are confident it will be, we'll be in that section. Yep. And then lastly, there will be a meeting on this coming Monday at 6:00. Xenia Community Schools will be doing several forums around the community to talk about their upcoming levy and their proposals for things happening in the, in the community. So the Monday meeting will be stakeholders and community people, so if you're interested at all, and hopefully people are interested in what's going on in the community, please attend that meeting. It will be at Xenia High School Cafeteria, again at 6:00.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Vice President. Thank you, Mr. President. Hold it, we have a jump in.
You know, there's thousands of people watch this on TV, but we, we won't tell anybody.
Yeah, don't tell anybody. Right.
That secret is safe with us.
I'm sure.
Don't worry, the Gazette was not recording that.
And all his information's accurate, right?
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and no kidding, we have quite a busy and active mayor. Marsha represents the city in a professional and positive manner, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I was in, I was in Ace Hardware just a couple of days ago, and we started bringing up, somebody had a dog in there, and I said, oh, the mayor brings her dog all the time, and they go, oh, yeah, Bruno, cries every time he walks in. And the lady knew your dog. I mean, so I, I just think that that's phenomenal, and, and really, I was able to attend that luncheon last week, so was Dr. Wallace, and I sat with Councilwoman Mays, and delicious food. I wish we could have had more time to eat more. It was great. And what a positive thing it was, because we just had people from all over coming to Xenia, Wilberforce, and we just have two very, we're just really blessed to have those learning institutions right in our backyard here. And, and again, I'd like to thank the members in the audience tonight, we have a pretty good crowd, thank you for coming, the Boy Scouts especially. And just to shout out, you know, shop Xenia when you can, because, you know, if you can buy in our town, it just really keeps those dollars here, it helps employ people in our community, it helps our tax base. You know, I see a lot of people in Xenia that, you know, and of course, I'm guilty too, we go to Beaver Creek, we spend our money, and I'm not dogging Beaver Creek. I don't see that same reciprocation a lot of times coming back. So it's just really important, if you can, you know, shop right here in town. And with that, I will end. Thank you.
I've got to add one thing.
Go right ahead.
If I may, I don't want to leave out Lee Warren, his family, his dad. I wish you could just come and just tell him a little, just, is that okay for him just to tell us about your dad being recognized?
For you, mayor, everything's okay. Mr. Warren, to the podium, please.
But his dad was honored at the luncheon as well. His dad is 92 years old, still a great-looking man, and, and has a real story to tell. If you could just...
Limit it to 15.
Oh, you're much more generous.
It's hard for me to keep, well, thank you first and foremost, council members, and Mayor Bayless, but we were quite honored as a family. My father, who is 92 years of age, just turned 92 a couple of weeks ago, is indeed a Buffalo soldier from World War II, and served in World War II from 1943 to 1945, and he and I often have conversations about his years as a Buffalo soldier. But we were honored in that the National Park Service had asked us, as they did with you, Mayor, to basically tell our regular story, because his story's not really been told that much, and they honored him with the opportunity to talk about his journey in the Italian theater in World War II. So he was able to chat about that, and they also did a piece with their partners, StoryCorps, which is all about telling the stories of Americans, regular Americans, and they captured he and I on tape, and that is now on the National Park Service website, being featured as one of their highlighted stories, where he and I have been chatting about his experiences and what the military meant to him, what it meant to the family, what it meant to him to live in Wilberforce, less than a half a mile away from the Charles Young Buffalo Soldier House, so, or National Monument, I should call it. So we were very honored as a family, and I thank you for saying that, and I will pass this along to my father, who I believe is one of the thousands that's watching. So we want more people to watch. ExploreXenia.com is the website, and we also want you to watch Government Channel TV5. But thank you very much for saying that, we were honored, and thank you for just acknowledging my father's contribution to this wonderful country.
Thank you.
All with that, I hardly have anything to add. Please, as we come to the end of our, our wintertime, all crossing our fingers here, we've had a relatively soft winter, but should we get any adverse weather, please continue to watch out for yourselves, your neighbors, people on the road with you, that sort of thing. In addition to Xenia High School and its good athletic programs and such, they are turning out any number of outstanding scholars. And I'm, I'm not ready to make an announcement yet, but I just wanted to let her know, if she's watching, that Carolyn Engel, I'm so proud of you.
Can I say it?
No.
No.
I can't.
It's really great news, but he'll tell you later.
It's a secret.
You're afraid they might tell.
It's a secret. Nobody will catch on. Nobody watches these things. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Told moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mays, second.
Second.
Does that say nobody wants to go? Councilman Lauterbach, roll call, please.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.